Oh my God.
Well, do you want to pass that one down?
Sure.
Because we have it usually once, twice a month, but usually once. Well, twice a month has been averaging out for us, right?
Yeah, we're coming, I believe, on the all that we're coming through clothes and we have some...
There wasn't a...
So I guess we're ready to start, so we'll start again as we did before and ask you just to tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right, I'm a lifelong Portage County resident. I live in Garrettsville. Went to Kent State University, graduated from there. Actually, I was going to school as I was working for RoTech when RoTech used to be here in town. And I spent 26 years working for RoTech as I worked on my degree. Worked there in a number of positions, everything from, I worked in the shop when I was working my way through school. And worked as a supervisor, worked in accounting, worked in purchasing, was a materials manager there when I left. After 26 years and went to a company in Astoria as a materials manager there. And I was there for, let's see, 95 through last year, so about 17 years. So, I mean, that's, in this day and age, I consider myself quite lucky to be able to spend that much time at two companies. You know, I mean, people are lucky to spend 15 years with one company, much less, you know, two companies for 40 some years.
Wow.
So that's been good. And basically, my working life has been in business, in manufacturing, and the name of the game in manufacturing always is less with more, or more with less, I mean, I don't know.
More with less.
So we had a lot, especially at Kent Metal, had a lot of cost projects. Lean manufacturing called it, basically, trying to improve the manufacturing process by standardizing, by slimming down, reducing setups, cutting costs, finding better ways to do things. And that was a really good process because it was always sort of, everybody understood you weren't going to come in and find the absolute best way to do it right out of the box, you know? It was an incremental type of approach. You tried to improve it a little bit by little bit, and you just kept doing that and doing that. And sooner or later, you know, you would, well, you'd never probably peak out, that was the point of it too. You know, you'd always find someplace better, something would happen. Let's see, my involvement with the airport, I guess, probably started mostly, I think mostly, in 2003. I took on the task of earning my pilot's license and worked with the FBO at Portage County and with several instructors there. And I got my pilot's license. I'm now a partner with three other guys. We have a plane at Portage County. And I'm hoping to parlay my work experience and my enthusiasm for flying into being able to help the Board of Trustees for the airport to improve things because it's downsome now. I mean, even from the 10, 10, 11 years ago that I was started, you know, a lot less activity, a lot less, a lot less people around, a lot less traffic, basically. So I'm hoping to, I guess if I had a wish, that would be it, that that airport would get to be more of a community place that people would come to enjoy flying as much as I do, so.
Every candidate that we talk to who have an interest in serving on the board and current members really do mutually share many of the sentiments that you've expressed, even from the first time you were in here. And they are enthused and their, I think, heart is in it. There seems to be, I'm going to be pretty blatant about this, a bit of a disconnect in the sense of maybe their passion for flying per se and of the importance of the airport, and they've all expressed their own community, maybe, step beyond it, seems to be, not like a backseat, but as to maybe the particular follow-through on some of the things that have been asked of the entire board to provide, to get some entities in the county that deal with economic development and deal with it very effectively, to get the tools that they need, that those entities need, to actually assess where the airport is financially and the assets and...
So are you saying they sort of don't want to do the dirty work to come up with the...
To be able to help them.
Yeah.
And I see that as a very critical need and a missing element. And again, not to belabor it or to say any of the current board members are...
Yeah, yeah.
That they're not, you know, wanting to make this work, but I think it's the old, you have to hold hands just before you walk. But there has to be more of a concentrated effort to get, you know, all those critical pieces like a business plan and really functional.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so I lay all that on you with your accounting background and your passion for flying and then...
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think you're right in that respect that, I mean, I think the whole, again, looking at it from the business perspective, when we went to buy a piece of equipment or add people or do anything like that, you know, you're always going to sit down and do exactly that kind of analysis to say, "Look, you know, we're going to add, you know, five people at, you know, $75,000 a year per person," or whatever the number was, "and what's going to be the payback or why are we doing it?" And, you know, go through all that kind of thing. So I, that kind, especially numbers, I mean, I've always, I've always been a numbers type of person. That provides an interesting challenge for me. Now, I mean, I don't know, I've attended one board meeting, so, you know, I got to hear about the tractor needing repaired and the lightning strike that took out the AWAS and things like that, so. But those are the little details of it, you know, so, I mean, but what you're talking about is on the larger scale as far as, what do you do in the long run? What are you doing? What's that five-year plan look like? That's the constant thing you hear about, right, with airports, a five-year plan, paying up.
That's exactly right. What we really need is strong leadership, people who can see beyond the tractor repair and all of that. The airport is strategically located, if you think about economic development, because there's a turnpike exit right close by and there's huge tracts of land that are vacant. And so we have suggested that the airport board work with the Economic Development Coordinator, Brad Airhard, along with the Regional Planning Director, who's very knowledgeable about development, and to, maybe also with the Port Authority, to try to figure out where should we be five years from now with the airport? Because the airport board has just barely been scraping along. And I think you wrote in your letter, or you said it at one of the meetings that we had with you, about the idea of going to other airports that are being successful to find out, you know, what are they doing?
Sure.
And to come back. So what we really need are people with strong leadership skills and the knowledge that it would take to, you know, get this going.
Yeah. I think, you know, from the standpoint that, I mean, my, attending that first meeting, I just barely found out the tip of the iceberg of what I don't know, you know?
Sure.
I don't even know that, you know, how the finances work now or anything like that. But I think it's all a learning process and the logic to work on a problem and solve it is, you know, fairly straightforward. I don't think it's having to learn a method, but it's having to learn the details. And certainly, I do still feel that, I don't care if it was, I mean, we did that at where I worked, you know, it was back then, you would call it best practices. You know, you would go to another company or another division in the same company and see what they did to find out what are those things? And the company always encouraged us to share best practices. So I think that kind of stuff is available and you do read a lot about airports with success stories out there.
No, we just got an invitation. I don't know if you saw it in your emails for the Akron Canton.
Yes.
We should seriously...
Yes, I want to go to that.
Because that's what they're talking about is, you know, how they control the noise control, their, like, their planning and how they, their, like, success story, basically. And that's what we need to do with ours because, I mean, it's truly an asset to the county, but it's just not being used to its potential. And it has so, you know, so much potential and especially for economic, you know, development and growth to expand it and get people to come in here versus, you know...
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, you know, Akron Canton with commercial operations that they have is a little bit different situation than ours without any, you know, we don't have any passenger trans.
But it started out very small.
Yeah, quite a long time ago, yeah. But there's a lot, there's a lot of airports that are parallel, exactly, probably are a situation that are more successful.
And I think too, you know, it can't over... It is critical when the tractor doesn't run or this is, or the hangar is destroyed.
But, but yes, yes.
You know, and I'm not, of course it is, and money or the lack of money. I mean, we face that every day with every department, every elected official that comes in here. So that is, you know, really appreciated and they are, they really are handled by lack of funds. But again, I think these other entities that are out there can assist in at least maybe getting to the next plan tool.
Like a business plan and someone like that has a vision for the airport to really, you know, get that expedited and moving in that direction because it is an asset.
And to do an analysis to find out who's actually using our airport. Is it mainly people such as yourself who's doing it recreationally? Or are business entities using it as a place? Because if it's used by small business to, or big business for that matter, to come in here and then shuttle or get a car to go to their meetings, that would be very interesting and significant, I would think.
Well, you know, for example, we have a partner, one of the partners in our plane is a flight instructor and he's also commercially, has a commercial license. And I know he flies for a guy who owns a company out of Aurora. And he, I know he's flown to Toledo, to Muncie, Indiana, to other places, you know, taking their people back and forth for different reasons like that. So, I mean, that's one case that I know of firsthand where they are getting some commercial benefit of it.
That's true, yeah.
But, but I, yeah, I mean, it's like everything else. If you can't measure it, you don't know what, if it's good, bad, or whatever. So you've got to be able to figure out how to measure it and then act accordingly, yeah. And I think the other challenge is just knowing which questions to ask. I mean, what I've always found is it's not the answers, it's the questions that are the biggest thing that you need to figure out.
Sometimes the answers become obvious if you ask the right questions. Well, did you have any other notions? Did you have any comments or questions for us?
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, I found it interesting. So you took advantage of a national program that had introductory flight lessons at $50?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh my gosh.
That was, they were advertising that and it was through some of the organizations that are out there.
Really?
And for $50, you got an initial flight lesson, you know? And I have to admit, at that point, you know, I mean, I looked at it and, well, when I grew up, it was like, you know, if you didn't have, like, 20/20 vision, forget it, you couldn't fly, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And just over the years, you know, that some of the private pilot type of thing, you know, became a figure that changed it and they would accept, you know, people with less vision. So I sort of put that on the back burner and I thought I couldn't afford it. $50, I could afford $50. And that opened up the door, you know, and that was great, you know?
So did they allow, like, for people who've had, like, corrective visioning now, like Lasik surgery and stuff, to be pilots, like, for the airlines and stuff, do you know?
Yes, yes, you can, you can wear glasses and be a commercial pilot.
Oh my gosh, wow.
Yeah. There's just, there's a couple of things you can't do, like, some people may have a corrective lens for nearsight in one eye and distance in the other. You can't do that. But you can, you could have Lasik surgery or, I just, I had cataract surgery last year. And you had to go through a couple of hoops to fill out the forms and do the testing and everything else, but...
That's interesting about the mono vision that you spoke of. Because I have mono vision. I've used it for about 40 years. And when I, I can read and see distance, I get 20/20 vision on my eye screenings. And so I don't understand why they wouldn't do that.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a matter of they're concerned with depth perception for, you know? That's why I was...
Yeah, they say it does interfere with depth perception, but I don't notice it.
Yeah.
I mean, I can estimate depth. I don't know how I do it, but...
Let's see how she does driving the car next time, right? Let's check out her driving skills.
Well, they always put me in the passenger seat.
I just thought that was interesting, it's like, 50... So now, like, how long does it take or how many lessons do you get before you get, like, your pilot's license? Is it like a long program or what?
Well, the minimum is you need, you need 40 hours.
Okay.
And that's broken down into hours with dual, dual with instructor there.
Oh, yeah.
And there's also cross-country hours, there's a requirement for maybe three hours at night. So the 40 hours is broken down, but that's pretty much a minimum. Not a lot of people get it in 40 hours. It takes a little bit more, so probably typically, I think, probably people closer to 60, maybe 50, 60 hours.
I think I can detect that Sabrina is going to...
No, 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 I was just, I'm just curious. I'm always curious to see, like, what's kind of schooling or, you know, Kent State has this...
Yeah, I mean, that's what you have to do as far as that goes. Then you have, you have written exams that you have to pass and there's a lot of studying involved with that and things like that. So it's, it's pretty elaborate, but it's not, you know, it's not something that the average person can't do.
Yeah.
I did. Not that I'm average, so.
We're going to have an Air Force one for Portage County. They're going to fly from meetings to meeting girls.
You know, there, I know, this is a really digress, there is actually a helicopter and a semi truck in Ritz Town. If you, I don't know if you've noticed, where Wick's lumber use was located.
Uh huh.
There is now...
On 18, yeah.
Yeah, there's a huge, some entity is either taking it over or leasing it. And I think it's, it's called PAR, P-A-R, and I think electrical. And I assume they are putting up, you know, this, the new utility line that is going up, you know...
Oh, across, after New Milled Road, like, that First Energy's doing.
I'm, again, assuming that, but there's actually a helicopter, at least the semi truck indicates that, you know, that there's a helicopter contained in it.
No, I think I saw, you know, we were, I live in, of course, in Garrettsville, northern side. And we were coming through this morning and I saw a helicopter hovering over those power lines to the east there a little bit.
Right, right, I would...
I wondered what they were doing.
They are installing these power lines that probably a helicopter would be wanted.
Yeah.
That's interesting. When I was a commissioner in the past, we were going to be raided by Moody's, rating company, because we were going to do bonds for...
I was strict, I remember.
And we say, well, Moody's was sending someone to evaluate our financial situation. And so we thought we were going to have all morning with this person. Then they called, well, kind of maybe a week before, and said, "Well, we're only going to give you two hours." So we thought, oh my goodness, how can we tell them how wonderful we are in two hours? So we rented a helicopter. And we took this person on the helicopter ride and we went around all of the various industrial sites, Kent State University, you know, the hospital, everywhere. And within an hour, they have, she had the grand tour of Portage County. Then we came back here and talked for a while.
That's a sight of pictures worth a thousand words type of thing, even better, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if there's no further questions, did you have any questions or something to ask?
Uh, no, I just, I'd be anxious to start and be part of that group. Hopefully that happens.
We'll let you know right away.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas, for coming back.
Good to see you.
It was nice to meet you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. I sure like his approach about best practices.
How do you term? There are two...
I believe so. And again, I apologize.
Just glad you made it here, Stan.
So we usually start by asking you to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the airport.
Okay, well, actually, I'm retired military, flew in the Navy. I also worked here locally with GE Lighting in IT department. And one of the best things that happened, people can look at it different ways, is that I thought my chapters for flying were closed and I got laid off, which freed me up in a way to go pursue flying again. Because I enjoy flying. I enjoyed IT, but it's just not the same. And I did a few things for the local Channel 5, Chopper 5, they used to have it. And one of my friends said, "You need to check with Metro because you flew large helicopters and they needed some pilots." So I checked with Metro Lifelight, you know, out of Cleveland, and started flying there. Well, fortunately, they decided to base at airports instead of hospitals. And that was after they bought their new helicopters, well, kind of simultaneously. So I was actually requesting Portage to, well, it's closer home, I live in Hudson, so. But when I got there, I just have an interest in the airport because it reminded me so much of my hometown airport back then. If you can't tell from South Carolina, so. Now slipped through every now and then, so I'll just go ahead and say it. And it just reminded me so much of my, where I used to take flying lessons after high school and get hours of flight time and go work two or three weeks and go buy another hour's flight time. But it just really interested me. I had an interest in it. And then, I guess, three years ago or so, they had an opening and I requested to be considered and you guys were gracious enough to allow me to be on it. I've learned a lot more about the airport than I did. It's a little different just looking outside, but when you're sitting in on the meetings and learning how things are going, it's an eye-opener, but it also shows you a lot of opportunity. At least, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So when my term was coming up, I, I don't want to step on feet anything, so I asked John Tru, I said, "Would you object?" He said, "No, submit your name again." So I went ahead and submitted again. And last time I was asked, I don't know if you've got a copy of my resume, but I was asked, well, you know, "What do you see for the future?" Well, again, I was kind of like outside looking in and I didn't really know all the going-ons internally. So, like cash flow and what's being paid for, what's not being paid for, who pays for this, who pays for that, you know? How much does FAA pay for? I've learned a lot of that. I've got kind of involved because I also fly out of there also with Lifelight. Lifelight's kind of unique in that, I'm not selling them, but I'm just kind of giving you some background. They're one of the few instrument-rated programs around, like University, STAT, several of these others. Well, they got multiple things. But first of all, they're due a pilot program, which I like, it's safer with two pilots up there. And people ask me, "Really?" I said, "Well, you go to Cleveland-Hockens or Akron Canton and if you saw two seats and one pilot, would you feel as safe?" And they go, "Oh." And he says, "I got autopilot." You know, it's still that extra set I, so they're a safe program. With that, they're also instrument-rated, which, you know how the weather changes around?
Yes.
Around here, you know, it can change in a heartbeat. Well, that gives you the capability of still going.
Oh, wow.
And part of that, I just, I just tickle the death for this, but part of that is we were in persistence and working with FAA, able to get another instrument approach added. Now, that's especially important to me because this new instrument approach gets you down lower to the ground. The old one we had was better than nothing. But if you, what happens when you shoot an instrument approach, it's like a highway in the sky. It leads you down to the airport. You get to a certain altitude and you either see the runways or you don't. And if you don't, you have to go around and you can try it again or you have to go to another airport. Well, the two instrument approaches re-added, and this is another good thing about it, are GPS approaches. Now, I don't know if you've heard too much, you know car GPSes. Well, this is a GPS approach for the airport, but it's improved GPS. We had an old GPS that land 27, in other words, it's coming from Youngstown going to the west. They added a approach going from the west to the east, the 09 approach. And in addition to that, instead of getting you down to 600 feet, this next one gets, the new ones get you down to 250 feet. And the bonus for the county is, is GPS. We don't have to pay for anything. It's from the satellites. We don't support the sat, well, we do through taxes, but I mean, you know, directly support them. And it's just available for all. And one of the best, you just kind of feel good about it because at one of the meetings, one of the guys, "Oh, I just used the 09 GPS approach." And he was really excited about it because it is very accurate, it gets you down right to the airport. And from personal, if it's bad weather, it gets you down closer so you're likely to come home at night. I don't have to go park at Akron Canton and have the pilots fly over there and trade and come back and all that sort of stuff. So we've had, what I think, several improvements to the airport. And I kind of rattle, so just stop me if I go too much. But it's a lot of, it's a lot of good things that's come out.
In your letter to us, having been on the board, you enumerated several things where you feel, going forward, that can involve at the airport. And the one bullet point right after, there is still much yet to be done and the current board members that are actively being toward bringing in the benefits and profits. And number one, issue an Air Force management agreement to replace a current 50-year contract with a reasonable contract that expires every five, eight years, which would be a tremendous accomplishment. Where are we, I don't even know, in the sense of this 50-year agreement, you know, ceasing and disisting? What year are they in?
I think it was signed, actually, that's my paperwork, because I was running upstairs. I left all that in their desk. It was signed like in 97. I mean, we're a long way. What they did, I did some background research, where did they come up with 50 years? I mean, that's just unreasonable.
I don't know.
Whoever was there went back. Portage County Airport is not Akron Fulton Airport. But they went to Akron Fulton Airport and got a boilerplate from them and moved it over and just kind of changed the names and places. That doesn't work. I mean, we're, we don't, it just doesn't work. It's trying to force something.
No, and I think we all, we all know that. And as to who did it or why, not renitance and niggling, it doesn't have to be rehatched, but it just seems that that is a really stifling issue.
Well, the thing, the thing is, I talked, currently, the one that has it, he had two other partners and they've kind of dropped out, is Mr. Bonner. And I talked to him and he thinks it's a ridiculous contract. We think it's a ridiculous contract. The challenge is, and see, I don't know the legalese of boards and stuff, but the challenge is getting some time other than once a month to get together. I've been gathering contracts from different places, trying to get best practices. School, it's called plagiarism, in business, it's called best practice. Get best practice of something that would fit for our airport.
Sure.
And, and right now, it's kind of like breaches on both sides of the contract. So I don't see how, how anybody could be at fault on it. It's supposed to be open 365 days a week. Since last year, you shut it down on the weekend. Well, when you shut, most recreational flyers fly on the weekend. They're working, they're working, and have to, they spend, they enjoy the time on the weekend. Well, it shut down, so they got a porta potty. One thing Lifelight did since they're the only ones there, you know, 24/7, they started locking their door because people would come in there using the restroom. And to support flying for instructors or anything else, you need a facility that's open that looks like you're welcoming people.
Sure, yeah.
It's that customer base thing. Now, and you just have to be friendly to customers and that's what, to do that, you're going to have to change how things are right now. You know? And I honestly don't know the proper format. I don't know if the board can say, "Okay, we're going to have a subcommittee to just draft something and present it to the board." Or, "I don't think you can work on your own because that looks like you're circumventing the board." See, I don't... See, I don't know a lot of these legal issues.
Yeah, well, I think it's just the rules of operation for the board, like, we usually follow Robert's rules, but what, what you, what the executive committee can do is to decide to have a subcommittee look into, someone can make a motion in a regular meeting to form a subcommittee to look into the idea of, of the contract, since there's a breach.
You don't mind if I take some notes?
No, but if someone just makes a motion, and the majority agrees, then, then either, either the board will nominate. You could have even people from outside that you have respect for, serve on as ex-official members of the board. The board would just simply be advisory. They would do the work, figure out, and then come back and make recommendations to the board.
Do, do you know, or does anyone on the airport board know why? Or has it been, have they gone directly to Mr. Bonner and, and asked him about staying open on the weekends? Which, you know, what you've explained sounds more than rational reasonable.
Well, we've mentioned it, and he said it was too costly, he couldn't afford it. Which, because of having somebody. Now, what, what I, I can see kind of both sides of that. The contract says you stay open three hundred and sixty-five days a week. When we've had snow two feet out there, Lifelight's the only one taking off and going down, you know? Nobody else has gone out there. And I could see a contract that says, "With advance notice, due to inclement weather," you know, you just don't randomly shut down, but you just tell them, "With this weather, storm coming, whatever, we're going to be shut down on the weekends." I could see, I, I'm trying to make it livable for, for everybody, you know? That's the same thing about closing a flight school.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, but closing the flight school. I mean, I've had people knock on the door, and of course, I was in the Lifelight uniform, I don't just hang out there, you know? But I had people knock on the doors, say, "Hey, is there a flight school?" "No, afraid we can't." We've had a couple of inquiries. But the one I'm aware of, now, there's another one, but I didn't follow up on that one as closely as this one, one that had the locations at Wise Worth, other places, they were interested. But if they didn't have a facility that they could use, in other words, they didn't want, they're legal, advise them, don't do it. If you can't have a facility that you know, say, we sink a few hundred thousand dollars into promotions and everything else, and then the, the owner of the facility says, "Well, I changed my mind, you're out," you, that's too much risk. So, they backed out and said, "No, we don't do it." Again, the board doesn't actually coordinate that, we direct them to Mr. Bonner and let them coordinate, but apparently, they didn't come to agreement or whatever.
So, how long has the, um, has it been closed on weekends?
Oh, it's been a.
A long time?
Oh, yeah, it's been a while.
Because I was going to say, I know it's a cost to be open on weekends, but it's probably a cost to us that we're not, would you say, or?
Oh, I, I know it is. Well, you, you discourage, but the only thing we really making money off of is like fuel sales, right? Well, for the board, it's fuel flow.
Yeah. Even for fuel sales, then it has to be sure.
But, but they don't have to be there, they got the self-service, and we got a maintenance contract to support that. So, you can still buy fuels. But it, it's the difference between going to self-service car wash, maybe, and a full service where somebody's smiling and greeting you, and, "Oh, would you like a cup of coffee and doughnuts?" It's a different customer relationship, and we're talking about customers who can choose to go wherever they want to go.
And you know, and that's what it's all about today, is, is convenience, is the convenience of doing business with someone versus, you know, if it's a lot of extra work, it's too easy to go down the road or go somewhere else.
Well, and not only that, on the weekends, people travel. You want it to be a welcoming place, because if you've got somebody on a cross-country with a little twin and wants to stop and refuel, pick us, pick us. But if they land, and they see everything's locked up, I can't go in there and use the internet to check weather, I got to use this porta potty for me and my family, now, I don't think I'm going to stop here next time. I'll pick another. Now, the advantage is, it is a good airport, it's a nice, I know it's short, everybody's going to say short, but we can still be the best little short airport around. We don't have to sacrifice our quality, and that's the first impressions you get, you know? And I.
Do you know, Todd Pease is the director of the Regional Planning Commission, and he's really good. He, he might be willing, if the airport board would wish to have it, he might be willing to do a SWOT analysis with the board, and also to assist in terms of setting up a longer-term plan. Because that would get the board thinking and talking about what needs to be done.
Yeah, he, he would be excellent. You know, your May twenty-eighth email to us, I, I highlighted this, and we've talked about it, in your last sentence in the first paragraph, as the Portage County Regional Airport Board continues to work more closely with the other county agencies, and to me, that is of absolute importance and essence, because as Kathy Alas mentioned, the Regional Planning Commission, we have a Portage Development Board, a Port Authority, even Neighborhood Development Services have all been willing to, to assist the airport. But there has to be those, if you don't mind me saying, follow-through on the part of the airport board to, you know, produce the documents and to work on like the five-year plan, so that when they have access to all these programs and funds, they have to have all that prepared in, in a bundle, so to speak, when they go to the, to the agencies to, to try to acquire the funds. So, that's a real strong point.
Well, I really think we, again, not looking back, why.
Of course.
But looking forward, we need to use all the resources available. You guys can use us as a resource to sell the GE plant that just closed, and so get some more business in there on a tax base. And you got an airport that your execs can fly in and out of now. You know, you got an interstate right down there. Hey, let's get, let's attract some, some, some more business and stuff, through whatever we can come up with.
It boils right down to leadership. We have to have strong leadership on the board, so that the kinds of things that you're talking about actually are occurring in the board meetings. There's no reason not to have Brad Earhart, who's our Economic Development Coordinator, come over and be a speaker at one of the meetings, or to have Brad, I mean, Todd Pease come in, if, if he's willing, to do a SWOT analysis to determine, where are you strong, where are you weak, what are your opportunities, and what are the barriers, so that the board can actually verbalize and think in terms of, where should we be? What are we doing, what are we accomplishing, and set some goals. And, and part of that goal-setting process would be, maybe, to look into, what other kinds of contracts are there? And I think to be caught in this fifty-year contract, you have a wonderful opportunity now, since it's being breached, to go ahead and either redo that contract with the current one, but change the terms. You'll need legal advice in order to be able to come up with a good one.
Now, let me ask you, you mentioned that, is, it almost seems sometimes like the resources in the county for legal are overwhelmed, that they don't have time to address any issues that we have. Is, is that something, I mean, we do have access to legal advice within the, within the county, right? Because sometimes it, it sounds like you don't have access.
Actually, you know, the, the airport board is a separate authority, the airport is a separate authority. They're not under the jurisdiction of commissioners.
Oh, because that's a confusion point for me.
Doesn't the prosecutor provide, I'm thinking back to the, first, maybe that was advice to us on the, on the deeds, but I thought that, in this case, it was Chris Manderi, who I thought was.
He would be advising you, I believe.
Well, I, I thought that he advised the airport board directly, because, and maybe I.
And see, I'm kind of confused, because I haven't, again, we kind of, we discuss things and come up with plans, and John Tru does a lot of the direct contact with other people in there.
Well, it, again, it seems to me that that thing that Kathy just made is a very valid one, and something that you should have legal counsel on, because that may be, you're out to this current lock-in and this.
Well, we definitely, once we get something kind of, once we get a plan that seems feasible and appropriate for airport, we're going to have to run it by somebody, so we're not overworking something, you know? And if we got some legal counsel that, that's successful, again, I'll tell you what, I feel like depression, because every time we go to look, we say, "Did we get enough rent in to cover these fixed expenses? Did we do this?" And fuel flow, I would, I would have suggested this in the board, that, look, we're getting fuel flow fees. We're paying for the pumps, we're paying for the maintenance, we're paying for all the upkeep, we just get fuel flow fees. I would like, and I probably mentioned it in there, at least it's on my mind, I wish we could afford to buy the fuel to fill the tanks and give the FBO fuel flow fees to just maintain the admin part, because we're maintaining everything else, but we're not getting any of the profit, you know?
Well, that's part of your, the legal arrangement that you have with them.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, going forward, that's something that needs to be looked at. And because we don't control the, and this is just some thoughts, I'm just throwing some ideas out, because we don't control the fuel prices and fuel flow.
Yeah.
We can't say, "If you use the paint shop down here, we'll give you a discount." We can't do that. We can't say, "If you use this mechanic here, this mechanic there on the field, when you go to lead, you'll get a little..." It's a little feel-good field, "We'll give you five cent off a gallon or whatever."
And enumerating all those things, there's basic, but they're essential, because regardless of the feeling or the thought right now on extending the runway, you're not even close to doing that because of those other constraints. And that, those have to be, those have to be addressed and handled and, and help, to make it, and to, it's worth going forward.
The, one of the problems I'm thinking is that the, Mr. Bonner is not operating in the interest of the airport, he's operating in his own private business interest, because he, he's really a separate business, it's connected with the board.
Excuse me.
And so, he, he, he wants to do what's good for him, obviously, that's what good business people do.
It reminds me of being in the Navy. The Navy has some great schools, you can get great opportunities, but the bottom line, the Navy's looking out for the Navy. It's up to you to use the resources you have, offered to you. And I kind of feel that way with Mr. Bonner. He's got a lot of resources, and his patients are somewhat thin. So, if, let's just say example, say Metro Lifelight wanted to, or was looking at renewing the contract, but they really wanted to extend the ramp a little bit to put the aircraft so it wouldn't be congested with all of it, guess what, in two weeks, we got an extended ramp there. So, the resources have helped, and then he gets the new contract, and thinks, "We got a motorized door." I mean, I'm not shorting him, but he is looking out for his bottom gun. He, he added a motor to the door, and you can only expect that, you know?
That's what he's supposed to do. The airport Board of Trustees, however, is supposed to look out for the airport interests. And normally, I would think in a business, the Board of Trustees would hire an executive director, someone who knew all about what they're supposed to be doing, and would guide the, the board, you know, as to what direction to take and what to do. There's a big void there in the airport, because you don't have an executive director that's working for you. You have an executive director that's working for himself, you know, I mean, I mean, that's just the way it is.
I understand, I understand.
Because he wasn't hired to look out.
You know, the, we, the board does contribute, it's a modest sum, but.
Is it the fuel?
The.
The fuel?
Yeah, for the, yeah, the fuel for the, for Lifelight. You know, Mr. Bonner requested that, and we thought it was well worth it, obviously, the benefit. So, we do that, so there are some things that we, you know, cooperate with.
Oh, I, I, I'm very much aware of that.
No, I know you are, just saying.
And we do appreciate.
No, 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 yeah, that pales in comparison to everything that you, you know, that you need, but that's, it's got to be stifling as a board member to have those barriers, you know, like this not on.
And Melvin, you know, I enjoy hearing your vision for, for the future of the airport. Do you think the rest of your board has the same vision, or would be willing to work to do some of the things that you truly see the potential of the airport to do?
I think so, it's, but maybe kind of having a little effect is kind of like a glass ceiling light. They think, "Well, we couldn't do it this time, we can..." But whenever the situation's changed, things change, you can do other things. The one thing I've learned over the past, what's it, three years, three years, I guess, is that the big, one of the biggest advantages we've got out there is the FAA, and leveraging them. And whenever we come, I know, it takes matching funds. I just attended, the good thing about what I'm doing, I'm on seven days, twenty-four hours, I'm, I'm beat at the end of those seven days, but then I'm off seven days. So, I can do some running around, some checking out things. I went to the Ohio Aviation Association meeting down in Columbus this past spring, because it matched my schedule and everything, and I went with John Tru and John Simon. And the biggest thing that I see as a plus, every time you buy fuel, it's just kind of like cars. When you buy fuel, part of it goes to highway tax, part of it, well, part of it goes to aviation tax. And the past few years, they've been throwing aviation tax in the general fund. So, we've been getting no matching from the state. They are trying to approach legislature and say, "Hey, maybe not," and I just heard on the news today that they're going to accelerate rebates to us taxpayers, well, that's a good thing. But what we're trying to say is, out of the aviation tax from aviation sales, give some back to the airports. If they do that, when the federal FAA comes up and says, "Well, you got this ten-year plan, you want to do this and this, where's your matching funds?" We can get some out of the state.
That's a really good idea.
And, and they're working on it, they're.
They are, oh, good.
Because we're a lot more solid than we were a few years ago, state-wise. And any normal person, if you say, "Well, you pay an aviation tax and it's going to a general fund, shouldn't it go to aviation?" You know, this is an aviation state, first flights and all that kind of stuff, you know?
License plate.
Yeah, so, and, and that's going to be a help for the airport when they get that. I mean, I don't turn away gifts, no matter how small or how big.
But can't your board make the decision to, even though it's not required, can't your board make the decision that certain funds will be set aside into a, a fund to be used for matching grants?
Well, right, and I'm sure you see our budget, right now, we're, because we don't have a cash generating, the biggest cash generator we have right now is two, well, three things. And I don't know why they never, only, I don't know the history then, but we finally got some hangar space. Unfortunately, one of the four fell down due to the wind, but we finally got some hangar space. They are always sold out. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to be out of Cleveland, where you have to deal with towers and approach control. They want to be in a local rural airport, so every one of them's sold out. We're trying to, well, we got to pay for the purchase. As soon as we pay for that, and if we get a reasonable, again, the advice, again, don't know where it came from, but we were underinsured on those hangars.
Well, the part that shocked me the most when I read about that.
Just way underinsured.
When, when I read about that insurance settlement, I thought, "Why? Why would the board agree?"
That was a board, hm? I said, "That was a board decision."
Yeah, why did you agree to such a?
I'm trying, I'm limited to.
No, 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 no.
We inherited a lot, too.
It isn't the point.
But you're right, why would they agree to something that couldn't be built?
Right, so here we sit thinking, it's very difficult.
And really, I.
Why would they accept it?
That's why I said, if, if we could integrate more closely, and I don't want to do it inappropriately, but with, with the county and say, "Hey, does this, use, use people for a sounding board if nothing, does this even make sense?"
What our big contribution can be is to make sure that we appoint people who are really leaders, who care, who have great ideas, like you do. So, it's really important for us to know, you know, do you have a strong coordinator? Do you have good leadership skills? Is the person who's the president of your board doing what a good president does? But you have to ask all those questions, and then you have to take the leadership to get it done, whatever needs to be done. And if, if you feel like we have two appointments now that we're working on, if, if you feel you need a certain kind of person to be on the board, I mean, we need to get feedback from the people we're serving on the tour.
I know the most recent guy, I really enjoy talking to him, and, is it Bob? I'm terrible with names.
Is he new to the board?
Just new, just came in recently.
Yeah, it wasn't, when you reappointed Eric, this is, he's been on a long time.
Norm?
Yeah, I meant Norm.
Norm Erickson?
Norm, Norm's knowledgeable, he's good, he, he's very good.
Oh, no, it's Robert Christer.
Yeah, Bob, Robert, Bob, yeah. I was talking to him, and he's kind of like me, he's done some studying on some other things, and saying, "Hey, this is some things we can do." I mean, there's some things, I don't know if John's approach, but there's some things we can do to make that general. to make that general area more attractive to business. And he's, all of us are trying to, in our free time, contact other people and say, what can we do to add, what can we do to enhance? I don't mean, and it's not just about money. First, you got to have the idea and have the plan before you can implement anything, so...
You know, I've often thought that leadership entails short-term thinking and long-term thinking. You need the short-term because you've got to be on top of things, have to know, make good business decisions. But you do need long-term planning all the time. And if you only have short-term thinking, then you just struggle along, struggle along day-to-day. It's like your family. If you make no long-term plans, you just live day-to-day, you know, nothing great happens. So, you do need those people who are visionary, but who also have leadership skills. And the board has to be sure that they elect a president who will be a leader, who will, I mean, I'm not saying when you have dozen, I'm just saying that, you know, I don't know enough of what's going on.
Well, each of the, the members kind of bring their own specialty.
Mm-hmm.
For instance, our current president, because he works so much in government and Aurora, he knows the implications of contracts and what's feasible and what's not feasible and what some of the rules, you know, are according to Ohio State Revised Code and all that sort of thing. Then you got other people, like Norm, he's got a real great business background, and he can actually ask, I mean, he can dig down technically as deep as you want to go. And, and sometimes he doesn't dig down because he doesn't want to embarrass anybody, you know? But he's very knowledgeable in technical aspects of things. And then you got other members that bring their own specialty that, that kind of...
But you know what you're still there, it makes me still think though that it's fragmented. So, I mean, in the sense of, and I, they, I agree, they all have their expertise and their, but it seems that it lacks a coordinated effort.
Effort.
With, driven by the same engine.
It doesn't have a leader that can move it.
Right, so I, I don't know, maybe I'm back to what Kathleen suggested, perhaps, perhaps Todd Peetz with having that SWOT analysis, you know, where, as we did at Amatec that day, where you risk the strengths and the weaknesses, maybe that would help the board, it would visualize more exactly what their strengths and weaknesses are.
Exactly, in one, one session, maybe two sessions. I want someone like Todd to come in and through the process that he uses, force you in a way to identify what your strengths are, weaknesses and opportunities and so forth, and to develop some thinking about long-term planning. What is it that we can do or want to do? And once you decide what you want to do or what you should do, those are your goals, then you decide, how do you get there? What do we need to do in order to reach this goal? And you have to have measurable successes.
Sounds like the Six Sigma stuff in G.
Well, it's the same, yeah, it's the same.
Because you got to measure if you're making block...
Well, every one of the board members has expressed the same thing you did in the sense of, boy, that 50-year contract is stifling.
Well...
And yet, we, none of us can seem to do anything about it. So, again, I'm thinking, if you found an answer, perhaps, that needs to be explored with legal counsel.
Yeah, let's find out who the legal counsel is for the airport, maybe you don't have it.
It just seemed like a confusion factor for me. And I'm not saying I'm aware of everything either, you know?
Right.
But who do we turn to, or do we have to...
We'll try to find out.
Hire that too?
That's a very big void, you have to have good legal counsel.
Yeah. And if, if one of your members, and I know Eric really well, I'm, yeah, is it Eric?
Eric, Norm Erickson.
Norm Erickson, I just, it's Norm. I mean, he's stopped in to visit several times, he's very enthusiastic and all, but you're right, he, he doesn't want to embarrass anyone. He wants everybody to get along. Well, sometimes, to be a good leader, you have to ask the hard questions, but you can do it in a polite way.
Of course.
I mean, he, he shouldn't be afraid to ask questions for fear somebody's going to embarrass. If he has the question, he should be able to ask it. Because then if he approaches a subject or, or just simply asks, could we get more information about? You shouldn't embarrass people. And then other leaders in the group should pick up on it and, and, because asking good questions critically inform them.
I don't mean to assume too much, but if I am around, how do we start, like a smaller committee, to draft, you can't draft a proposed contract with everybody. I mean, you know, you can't be efficient.
You have to find out if you can get out of the one that you're in.
Well, like I said, I think it is written so loosely, it's, it's almost like if anything causes inconvenience, then you can back...
The thing, you do need legal counsel because you can't have amateurs writing contracts. So, what you do is the amateurs tell the legal counsel what it is you want to accomplish because they're setting the policy and the goals. But then the legal counsel has, has the expertise to be able to put it in the contract language. So, we can find out for you whether or not the county can provide or does provide legal service to you and then we can get back to you on that. The way to go about it would be in, in one of your meetings or beforehand, ask to have put on the agenda the question about a subcommittee to look into the current contract.
Okay, well, I can send that to you and...
And see what the interest is and the expertise.
Yeah, you know, it's not to overlook the fact Mr. Bonner's made a huge investment there, no question. But, you know, there must be some, maybe compromise that could be looked at.
Yeah, and, and in my conversation with him, and this is like three years ago, he even thought the 50-year thing was ridiculous.
Yeah.
But he thought it was ridiculous because of some of the things that were specifying, it didn't give any allowance for, like, inclement weather and stuff like that. We think it's ridiculous for other reasons, but still, it's not valid.
But you don't mind him telling you how to change it and, and your colleagues telling you how to change it? You need legal counsel or someone who's an expert because, first of all, the very things that he's complaining about are the very things that gives you an opportunity to break, to do away with the contract. I mean, he's in breach. If he, if some of the stuff that you've asked that he's signed on to, he can't do it, gives you an opportunity, because he's breaching the contract, gives you an opportunity to start over.
The same rationale he uses is it's too costly. Now, obviously, he's not sure it's his books, but it's too costly to keep it open on weekends. We can use that same rationale, we've got that tractor, snowplow equipment and all that, and say, you know, what you're charging us to keep, to keep runways clear is too costly. We need to do it ourselves with our own tractor, with our own...
Thank you.
So, so we got some, some things we could kind of counter on that also.
Here, I hear we have the answer to your question. The, the attorneys and staff assignment for this year, for the boards and agencies and departments, the Airport Authority, legal counsel to you is Chris Maturi.
Right, that's right.
And Tim, uh, Piro?
Yeah.
Is that him? Piro?
Yeah.
Tim Piro, those two.
Oh, so we have...
Do you have a phone number for them?
Yeah, 330-297-3850.
There you go.
That's, that's the prosecutor's office number.
Or you know, you might even call Denise Smith, who is chief of civil. Maybe, you know, my senior sergeant may be initiated through Denise, and then maybe they could have a drink, a conference with, with, if it is Chris or whoever the attorney is, and Denise is chief of civil. Because those assistant prosecutors then in civil are all under, you know, Mrs. Smith, so...
Okay.
And you know, when Denise comes in also, we can share our concerns with her.
Absolutely.
Well, that'd be great, you could kind of pave the way, so...
But just remember that legal counsel generally doesn't set policy or tell you what to do or how to do it, rather, will review whatever you're doing in terms to make sure that it's legal. So, that 50-year contract, whoever the legal counsel was then, certainly wasn't giving any advice because no one would ever, I don't think, ever recommend that you have a 50-year contract like that.
And not as broad as you...
Well, it'd have to be long-term to get someone to come in and invest big bucks. But 50 years, you could have an opener at some point.
But you know, you have a wealth of information there and everything you've just said about those, the ambiguity of it maybe being to your benefit and so many things, I think you said, are maybe in violation or, or at least they're so ambiguous or so broad that it may be, you know, it may be an opportunity for legal counsel to say, you're, you know, these are some things that we can use in terminating that contract. But those, again, you're going to have to sit with legal counsel and pose those questions. Specifically, say, here's what we would like to do as a board, if we can get out of that. And here is why we, here are some things we've enumerated in, in just reading the contract, if you don't want to be saying as layman, now advise us, how do we proceed with getting out of all these?
Well, one thing I was trying to do, because we're not trying to do anything you need.
No, 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 no.
And I was trying to get a, a draft of what we think would probably be appropriate.
That's good.
And have something to present.
Good.
And, and say, this is what we under right now, this is what we've proposed, and this is what's actually happened. So, you can see what's in violation, what's not in violation, and do your legal analysis based on that. This is a proposal that's actually in effect over, like, wise where, wherever the other airport is. And that's kind of what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure how to, the first, again, how to, how to, how to do something apart from the monthly meeting where you can't get all the...
Well, you could as a board member, or a citizen could do this, I mean, you can go ahead and do your own research. You know, you're not doing it under the jurisdiction of the board, you're just learning about it. A lot of times, when, when I serve on boards or commissions, I do my homework, which means I'm trying to learn about things. So, one of the things that you, that you're planning to do or doing is looking into the contracts just to see what they look like. And you can bring that expertise to any kind of discussion. And if there is a subcommittee to look into that, you might want to volunteer to serve on that, on that committee because of all the background work that you've done.
Well, that's similar to what I did with these approaches. They actually shut us down at night, we couldn't shoot any approaches at night.
Yeah.
I, I got a copy of the letter that the board got, looked at it, since I, being in the government, being in IT, you had to deal with contracts, you know? So, I went through it and I kind of knew what they were looking for. So, I did a draft letter after talking to the FAA representative that sent the letter back, did a draft letter, presented it to the board at the meeting, said, this is just a draft, you can change it any way you want to, but this is what he's looking for, to open us back up, let us have full approaches and all that. They took it, ran with it, and now we got all the approaches going. So, I, I don't mind doing things on my own, just kind of drafting and then presenting it for...
And if you want to do it with...
Just, that's good, but I'm, I'm back to thinking, you don't want it to be fragmented either, so...
Right.
And it's good to know that you've presented those things and then the board has a consensus and they want to go further.
That's what they did, I just said, I got copies for everybody and said, you know, this is...
Yeah, but it seems that there should be a, individually, you're right, you can do the research and... But it seems like, again, I think you really need to sit down with Todd Peetz and have that strength and weaknesses, because I think you're going to find, all of you have tremendous strengths. And the weakness may be in the, I call it the engine, the driving force. The numero uno, the one that takes it forward.
The big, the big barrier and disadvantages that contract, that 50-year contract. And so, but the other way to approach it, other than just doing your own research, is to go to the board, put on the agenda, you know, think you have an agenda. Anything you want to discuss should be on that agenda. I mean, they'll say new business, old business, or they'll just say, anyone have anything they want to talk about, you can talk about it. But if you put on the agenda a discussion concerning the, if it's about the contract, the, a review of the contract, and then they could have a subcommittee or they could assign people to do the research, you could volunteer to do. And then you're doing it under the authority of the board rather than as some individual board.
And that's what I wanted to kind of do. I didn't want to look like I was, you know, all the mellow corner doing...
You know, I think a nice lead into that would be, you have things you just said, on the agenda, but I think you have a perfect topic to go back to them saying, you know, I just sat with the commissioners because my term is up and I wanted to express my interest in renewing. And we had quite, I think we've had a very lengthy and productive open discussion and maybe share the context of that. And, you know, to give them an impetus to say, we can, we can do this, we can capitalize on that and move forward as a board.
Yeah, one of the suggestions that you could share that we made was that they contact Todd Peetz and ask if he's willing to lead a discussion concerning...
Help facilitate it, yeah.
Yeah, facilitate.
SWAT analysis.
And if they're not familiar with a facilitation for that kind of an exercise, the, Todd would not impose any of his ideas at all. What he would do is draw up from the group with their ideas.
I've, I've heard referenced over time SWAT analysis, and I'm not familiar with that.
It's strengths is S.
Okay.
Weaknesses is W.
Opportunities is the O. And then the rest.
Okay.
He did this, he conducted that for the development of the strategic plan for the Portage Development Board. It was a very...
I must think it, it helps the board get the buy-in that it's just, it's not just someone's special interest and everyone's invited to participate. And it's interesting sometimes to hear what some people feel are the strengths, the weaknesses, or what they feel are threats and, and opportunities.
And the wonderful thing that happens is that you get to know each other a little better.
Yeah.
You're sharing ideas about the airport. And then the outcome can be that you will set some goals. And usually, the, the goals are the very broad-based things, you know, five years from now we want to be such and such a place. And then you set objectives. The objectives are much more narrow. And then you set the steps to achieve the, the objectives. And those are very, very concrete and very narrow and very measurable. But a good person doing it, a lot of people do it, you can get people to do it, I'm sure, for free or, you know, inexpensively. In one evening even, you can get so much done, you have a much better understanding of direction. And so, it's, it's a really important thing.
Maybe I can recommend this at, I'm kind of thinking, and I know everybody's a volunteer, but maybe a sep, can they do a separate meeting other than a board meeting, so we do something?
Yeah.
So, so you have time, so you're not just covering budgets and then trying to cram something in at the last... I don't mean to cram, but you know.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of dedicate it to this instead of...
It should be a separate time.
Maybe a Saturday, I know everyone guards their Saturdays jealously, but, you know, maybe something like that or another evening of the week.
Yeah, but the cost benefit, if we can identify these things, the benefit would be worth, worth the, the time.
Yeah, and sometimes they reference them as like a strategic planning session, or they'll, they'll recognize them as like a board retreat where the board all gets together and they do this to collaboratively come together with a plan of action or, or like you said, maybe like a five-year plan or, you know, a short-term and a long-term plan. And then everyone's all on board.
Well, I didn't, I talked too much, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Hey, we do too, don't feel bad. We probably hold you up.
No, you guys, you have my schedule. I just apologize for the traffic.
Well, that's fine, why'd you mean to hear safe?
I didn't hear any...
Well, thank you so much for coming and we should, we'll be making the decision probably on Thursday and then we'll let you know.
Well, thank you for the ideas too, because that's, that's good, regardless of decision, I can still pass that on, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I just want you to know, you do have a diamond in the rough, we just haven't, we just haven't polished it right.
No, right, and that's, and we're all in agreement with that. We've just got to get the right people on there to take it where it can go.
Right, right.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Melvin, nice to meet you.
You have a great day.
Yes, thank you for what you do for us.
Well, thank you.
Yes, yes, for your volunteers.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye, second.
All those in favor, please stay aye.
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 Oh, I want to stay longer.
Well, we have to, Amy, we're going to ask Denise Smith when we meet with her again, or maybe let her know that perhaps the airport board will be contacting her and set up a joint meeting with herself. And I guess it is Chris, or is it?
Chris intended to appear. Oh. We weren't, no. Was it all being taped?
Yes.
I have no idea.
Oh, that's why I had this going.
It wasn't on. No, it is now, but before it just put Portage County on there.
Oh, geez.
Oh, sure.
I thought I saw it on.
Yeah, I thought it was on.
Yeah, it's on, it was on, I saw it.
Well, no, it wasn't on a few minutes ago when I looked at it, it is now, but it had Portage County on it.
Oh, my. It paused for, took a break. It paused for, took a break. I think it was on earlier.
Okay. Oh, well.